Commissioner Patterson, would you lead us in any occasions, sir?
Sure will. I'd like to mention something just real quick. Today, we're Charlie Kirk's birthday. And if y'all been watching any TV, the President is honoring him. Largest honor that it can be for a civilian, which is the Medal of Freedom. So, you know, he left behind his wife and two kids, two small children. Just remember him today, and you know, use the truth. And the truth will set you free, is what the word says. So let's just remember that, and let's go to the Lord in prayer right now. Dear gracious only Father, we just thank you again for all you've done for us today, and all you do for us every day. We ask that you'd forgive us of our sins, help us to be more like you in each and every way. And Lord, especially with Charlie Kirk family, we appreciate the honor, not that this President gave, but that you give, that he could talk about the Bible and your word. And Lord, we just ask now that you would just go with this meeting. Thank you for everyone here today, Lord. And help us to have this meeting in the way that you want us to, Lord, that we could be a county that serves you and honors you. Give us wisdom now, Lord. And again, we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Do you want me to pledge allegiance? My pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it spans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, y'all. All right, under unfinished business, we have the approval of our minutes from September 23rd, 2025, regular board meeting. Commissioner Patterson, any airdrome mentions from those minutes?
I have none, Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Sargent?
No, sir.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve those minutes, and I'll ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so under new business, we have a marriage request from Matt and Amanda Blachlud to build new home eleven feet from the property lines, and the neighbor's approval. Is there anyone here that supports this marriage request or against it? Notice on the last page of that is a court document from the neighbor. Any discussion on this, gentlemen?
Cut their clothes, honey.
Cut their clothes.
I'm fine, Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Sargent?
No, I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the marriage request, and I'll ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor? All right, so next, we have a marriage request from Shanger Ezra and Rhiannon Smith to build a home ten feet from the property line with the neighbor's approval. Once again, gentlemen, if you're... Is there anyone here for this or against this marriage request? Commissioner Patterson, you have any discussion on this?
On the builder permit application, I was seeing a note that says check with Keith about the well. Do you have information about that?
Yep, Keith, I spoke with Keith regarding to that. I actually spoke to him early this morning. He went out and took a look. I always get it cord hands up.
Keith Nicholson.
Yes, Keith Nicholson, I'm sorry.
That's all I have, Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Sargent?
No, sir, I'm good.
I'll make a motion to approve this marriage request, and I'll ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor? Number three, the marriage request from Austin Fest to build a new home fifteen feet from the edge of Gustalane. Is there anyone here for this marriage request? Anyone oppose?
Austin here? If not?
So, gentlemen, that was, if y'all remember, we... I don't know if we actually put this on the agenda last time, because we had some questions about the parking. And so, Keith Nicholson went out, looked at... You know, we always have to turn about how they're gonna back out into the road and things like that, and that was very close, but he did. It's still gonna be fifteen feet from the edge, but it did change the way the parking was. They actually made another little parking area over there for it too. So, that's kind of what I was waiting for Mr. Nicholson to let me know on that.
So that'll help with the parking there?
Yeah, sure will.
How many parking spaces did they have?
Oh, one or two, or six.
I'm sorry.
It is a, it's a three-car garage, is what it is.
Three-car?
Yeah, it's a three-car garage, but if you'll notice on the... There it is, fourth, fifth page back. So instead of coming in off the road, you come into the front of the house and take a right into the garage, so you're not backing out into the road.
I got you.
See, I'm following that.
Yeah, I see it.
So he was able to work that out with. Any further discussion on this?
No, sir.
I have none.
Make a motion to approve this marriage request, and I'll ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor? So number four, we have adoption of a resolution named Old Highway Seventy-Six, which goes over Blue Ridge Dam in honor of Mr. A.D. Frazier. And Ms. Frazier, do you have anything you would like to...
Can't talk about here.
Ms. Frazier, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, my name is Dale Green, and I reside here in the city of Blue Ridge. I have known A.D. Frazier for...
It is on.
It's on.
There you go.
Okay. We are here to ask that a portion of the county road that goes across TPA Dam be named the A.D. Frazier Memorial Highway. Most of the people in this room either know or have heard of A.D., probably because of his being the chief operating officer of the Olympics in Atlanta in nineteen ninety-six. A.D. and his then-wife Claire had bought property here in nineteen ninety-eight. They have been permanent residents of Vann County since two thousand and two. The list of accomplishments for Mr. Frazier is just too long to go into, so what we want to do is comment on what he's done here at Vann County. It may not be as visible as all the news media makes things happen in Atlanta. Not only has he been a tremendous supporter of Snack in the Backpack, but also a tremendous supporter of Marine Corpsiliters for Tots. Behind the scenes, he has donated so much time and treasure to the benefit of Vann County that it's just immeasurable. And we think it would only be appropriate to name that portion of the highway that goes across the dam in his memorial.
And I'd just like to add that I had the pleasure of seeing my husband's love and support, especially the young men in this community. And he never liked what he did for others to be publicized. But he went above and beyond to show that they were lucky here for it. He made sure they always have what they needed when they needed it. And it would be an honor to honor him in that way.
Thank you.
Thank y'all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, we do have a resolution, and I will read that resolution, but I also want to bring attention to this is a fourth letter from TBA that doesn't support this particular resolution.
Yeah.
So with that, I'll read this resolution. It's a resolution to honor the life of Adolphus Drew Frazier Jr. for other purposes, whereas A.D. Frazier, as he was better at home, made his home in Vann County for more than a quarter of a century. And whereas a skilled businessman, A.D. made Georgia his home in nineteen ninety-one when he accepted the role of chief operations officer for the nineteen ninety-six Olympics in Atlanta, which brought the world to Georgia. Whereas his tremendous business skills and devotion to our area led to his being asked to serve on the Board of the Tennessee Valley Authority. Whereas A.D. utilized his legendary leadership, his business expertise, and his genuine desire to help others for the advancement of Vann County's Snack in the Backpack, Vann County Family Connections, Toy for Tots, among many others. Whereas compassionate and generous man, A.D. will long be remembered for his love of family and community and will be missed by all who have great and good fortune of knowing him. And whereas it is appropriate for Vann County to honor the service of one of its own by the name of the bridge at Lake Blue Ridge Reservoir, which spans the floodgates of Tennessee Valley Engineering Lake. Gentlemen, that's the resolution. Do we have any discussion before we vote?
I have none.
No, I mean, not only A.D. done all these things, but Dang it, A.D. too. He was a good supporter of law enforcement too, so I mean, I know he was a good man.
Well, nothing further, I'll make a motion to adopt this resolution, and I'll ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor? All right, so the next, number five, is an adoption of a resolution naming a bridge in honor of Lois Nell Stanley Long. Any family that'd like to come up and say a few words here?
I'll say something, I believe.
All right.
Most everybody that's here, lifelong residents knew my dad, I'm sure. My dad not only... Not only was my mother, fourth generation's handling in this area, but my dad, Lois Long also, so... Daddy was a big supporter, as most of us know, to help get Ask a Road through there and get it paved. When we were growing up, when we had to haul rocks and pick it up to fill in the mud holes in the road so we could get out. So Daddy worked very hard to get past Ask a Road, as far as Big Creek too, Daddy. Just like to say, I thank y'all for your consideration. We also, he donated the property there where the bridge is at. We'd just like to name it Mom and Mother's name, and we appreciate the consideration.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, we have a resolution here as well, we'll read. It's a resolution to honor the life of Lois Nell Stanley Long for other purposes. Whereas Lois Nell Stanley Long was a lifetime resident of Vann County of a century. And whereas Lois Nell Stanley Long was born in Vann County in nineteen twenty and spent the next ninety-seven years as a proud ambassador for the area. Whereas Ms. Lois and her husband Herman Sealong were pioneers in the tourism industry of Vann County, operating the Toccoa Valley campground, which would come to allow locals and visitors alike to enjoy the beauty of the Toccoa River floating on its legendary pink tubes, a color chosen in her honor. And whereas Ms. Lois, together with her husband Herman, are created with founding the oldest tubing company in the state of Georgia. And whereas Ms. Long utilized natural skills as a homemaker and hostess to extend southern hospitality to all who shared an afternoon on the river or night under the stars near her home. Whereas Ms. Long recognized the benefit of sharing her area with others long before we became a tourist destination and sought to create a safe, peaceful, and wholesome environment for all who visit her. And whereas it is appropriate for Vann County to honor the service of one of its own by the name of the bridge on Ascot that spans Big Creek near the point of intersection with the Toccoa River. Gentlemen, any discussion on this before we vote?
No, sir, I have none.
I'll make a motion to accept this resolution, and I'll ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor? Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, number six, we have Lieutenant... Lieutenant Tyler Limburg with the Sheriff's Office of Gormparks, and that's quick.
Everybody hear me okay? So I was looking to do a squash purchase for a new dishwasher for the jail kitchen. Ours is currently seven years old, and it keeps messing up, where we keep having to call people in to fix it. Currently now, it is down due to, it needs a new motor, drive assembly, display board, and panel, communication cable, and a one-half fuse, which is estimated at eight thousand eight hundred eighty-six dollars and one cent for the repairs. I quoted a new one, a brand-new one, from K-Tom Restaurant Supply, and it is with a five-year manufacturer warranty, thirteen thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars and thirty cents for a brand-new one.
When you get it, if the license...
I'm sorry?
How long's it gonna take to get here if we approve this?
Lead time, they said is anywhere between four, four weeks to six weeks you ever take to build it and ship it out.
Lot of hand washing, right?
Yeah, yeah, right now, our dishwasher is inoperable and not working at the moment for all sixty, seventy inmates that we have.
Well, I'm saying, Paul Mollin is not what it used to.
He's too good of hands.
No more pride, don't make it.
That's what I've run with, y'all, me for Chris.
Well, those will be your main issue, you don't know the whole.
Is it fried? Did what you install it?
No, our county maintenance guy, Ed Hawkins, I spoke to him this morning, and he said that him and his guys can install it for us.
Can you tell me for the record who that's purchased from again?
The new one will be purchased through K-Tom Restaurant Supply Incorporated. That's K-A-T-O-M.
And I think you mentioned the warranty.
It's a five-year extended manufacturer intake warranty.
Where they have that?
K-Tom's out of Kodak, Tennessee, up there near Suburban.
Gentlemen, any discussion on this?
No.
Ben said I'm gonna have a dishwasher. Ben said I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a dishwasher and amount thirteen thousand seven hundred ninety dollars and thirty cents to be paying out of public safety sploths, or admin sploths, thanks.
Yeah, admin sploths.
I'll make that motion, ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor? Thank you, sir. Hey, what were the dimensions of that?
The dimensions, if I remember correctly, are forty-four inches long, conveyor length, sixty-two inches tall, and twenty-six inches deep.
I was asking.
Oh, no, I was just gonna answer.
Way to get out of there. But he was...
That curve ball got knocked out. Can you hit a curve or anything?
But he got you, didn't he?
Thirteen thousand seven hundred ninety dollars. You reckon they take thirteen seven ninety even?
I don't know, flat the disc and trim it or something.
We hurry cut back on taxes.
All right, the next one is, ladies and gentlemen, is the purchase of equipment, and that's being a vehicle for the commissioners' wing. So, as you guys know, we try our best to get school up as much as we can. Ninety-nine pounds up a hundred, we take our own vehicles, and... I know it sounds bad, but I ain't asking for nothing since I've been here. And this would benefit mainly everybody in our office as they do go to school and things like that. So my ask would be that we do purchase a vehicle and try to get something equivalent, is what we've had in the past. Maybe like a Ford Explorer or something to that effect. And we know the prices are, went crazy, but I would probably look at purchasing maybe a pre-lease one or a used one, not to exceed the amount of thirty-four thousand dollars, and that would be paid out of admin sploths as well. So, y'all's thoughts on that?
I have no issues with it because of all the training that, you know, that comes along with this now. I mean, and everybody's got their training, so you can't get out of it. And actually, it'd be cheaper really on this Vann County. I have no issues with it.
Maintenance and everything like that. Where's the warranty on it?
I'd be looking for one. We try to find some of some manufacturer's warranty lists on it, but... Yeah. But I think we can find one for less than thirty-four thousand. We know a new, new one that somewhere around forty, Mark, I believe, forty-five.
Yeah, no, it's fifty-three, I wouldn't say.
I think we can find one for less than thirty-four.
Yeah. I'm gonna give it.
All right.
I'm happy, sir.
All right. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to purchase this not to exceed thirty-four thousand dollars out of admin sploths. I'll ask for that motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor? Well, number eight, hearing again, asking, I really hate to do that.
No.
Is what it is? But, so gentlemen, we've had Doc Mitchell approach us, and it's one of those that we just really have to look at because it's almost one of those too good to be true, but here it is, it'll be in a contract. So Doc Mitchell approached us about working with Vann County. Obviously, he moved, he's trying to get back in the area. He's seen the need for low-cost, low-cost clinic. And, you know, with our, trying to build a new facility possibly next year, that's our goal, is to have that done next year. He wants to go ahead and start working with us on that. So this would be trying to go into a contract with Doc Mitchell. I'll read the contract here in one second, but in return, what he would do is he would do all of our spanneleders for free.
What's that cost us now?
It costs us a dollar or two.
So we're slaveless.
Cheapest we have seen, and Luke probably elaborated on this, cheapest we've had is a hundred and seventy-five dollars, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct, Luke?
Around a hundred and fifty and forty.
Hundred and fifty, okay.
That's pretty rare.
And how many?
Hundred and fifty, and we've paid as much as? Three hundred, so...
And how many?
It'd be whatever we intake in animal control. So we got somewhere between two hundred and fifty and three hundred has been the intake, if I'm not mistaken, this year, is that correct?
Maybe a little low this year on account of...
Bit full in the back end, okay. So let's just say two hundred?
Well, we're gonna beat that, but yeah.
Okay. Somewhere between two and two fifty, how's that?
So it's, I'm waiting for the county, because he's wanting to team up with us.
Yes.
And then we'll have somebody in-house now. And all he's wanting out of it is?
He would be, in essence, providing the county with a low-cost clinic, and that's where he would make his money, is doing that. We would provide a place to work out of in lieu. We get services for free, basically. And then he would make his money in a, in the low-cost clinic on the side. So anybody else could bring their animals up there, and he would take care of that, and that's where he would make his money.
Well, that's good, I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna build that new animal shelter, so we'll have the, he'll have the facility there for that.
Right.
Yeah.
And that would make people, more people would react to come and use that service.
See, it's a state law, and if we take an animal in and it's dumped out, it has to be state-renewed. So we don't have a choice. And I mean, it's just a health, safety issue all the way across the board, but we don't have a choice. So this, you're not speeding dollars if you're otherwise being compelled to speed.
So in this contract, then, let's say everything's smooth sailing, but if something did occur that it didn't help the county, or we have an option to get out of this?
We do, yeah. The department may terminate within agreement within ninety days.
Okay, that sounds good.
Notice to each other, so. Any other discussion on this?
No, sir.
I will ask for a motion. I will ask for a motion to, uh, go into the contract with Dr. Mitchell, um, to provide animal control, um, a service to this county. I'll ask for that motion.
I'll make a motion.
And I'll ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
When is he gonna start?
Week, week and a week in there.
Gotta move somebody out, don't we?
Uh, our, our goal, all goal signed is, uh, first of November.
Okay.
We're gonna push, make it happen.
Cool.
We're gonna do our best. Alright, so number nine, it's your turn to ask. My way of our finance director, Sherry Walker, regarding copier lease agreement for DPI.
This is just a renewal of the, uh, lease agreement through DPI for the copier machine that's located in the Board of Commissioners', uh, office. Uh, we have a five-year lease currently on that, so we're just up for renewal on that and they'll bring a new copier machine and put that in our office. Uh, it's gonna be one seventy-two seventy-one for the lease payment a month and that will be for sixty, uh, months, which will be five years. And that, uh, doesn't, um, include the cost as, as far as the usage. There is a usage cost on that. And depending on how much we use, it hasn't, it's actually come down a little bit in the cost. So, it was, we're currently at three fifty-nine oh nine and they've come down to three forty-eight twenty-three for the whole usage. That also includes the lease payment, so.
And that includes all maintenance?
It does. They come out regularly and do, uh, maintenance on it, so. And the one we have right now is starting this week, so.
So, what is, what was all?
Pardon me?
What is the total we wind up spending?
The lease payment's one seventy-two seventy-one and based on the usage of the machine, it can be as much as three forty-eight twenty-three. That does include the monthly lease payment of one seventy-two seventy-one. So, really, the usage would be like, uh, sixteen dollars and eighty cents of one fifty-eight seventy-two, so.
Well, price gone down a little bit.
Yeah.
Don't worry about it.
Not bad, it's been a little.
Thankful for that. That thing gets used a lot, come on, man. Do you have any discussion on this?
I have none, sir.
No, sir.
Let Ben said, I'll make a motion to, uh, we'll call it re-up our contract, renew our contract with DPI, uh, lease, on the copier lease. I'll make that motion as per second.
A second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Alright, and, uh, so number ten. You gonna leave me a phone if we can get a hold of him?
Yeah, he's on standby. Okay, you're, uh, number ten for your purchase of equipment, so I've got you on speaker.
Okay. Commissions, this is Zach. Uh, I'd like a purchase for a mower. It's a one-sixty offset for a mower from Nelson Tractor Company. And it's the government pricing of seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. They have it installed.
So, Zach, I presume you're gonna get it soon?
Uh, they have it installed, yes, sir. As quick as we can get up there to get it, yes.
Tell us a little bit about this, uh, rail mower.
It, uh, the reason I'm, I'm looking at these, they don't throw the grass out in the row up here. The road repairers do. Uh, they're, they're not so bad to throw rocks like the road repairers do. Uh, this one is actually an offset. That's kind of what I'm after, anything I'm about and it's not going on. I need to have at least an offset. Uh, I can get in the ditch line and I get up on the banks and this one will, this one will turn up to ninety degrees straight up and mow. And then lay down, you know, at a, a zero, it, it on the flat surface. Or if it goes, if it needs to hang over the bank a little bit, it can do that. So, it's pretty, pretty versatile.
You know the reach on that one by chance?
Uh, I did, I did. I think that offset is a hundred and sixty inches. Uh, I mean, that may be, I mean, I think it's the whole total and if everything hit from the back wheel out.
It looks like it can cover a lot of ground.
It, it, you can. I thought, I can't remember the exact number, but, uh, it's got like, uh, ha, they call them hammers or, or teeth. And it's got like, I don't know, something like it's got eighteen on four rolls or so. There's four rolls, up to eighteen per roll or so. And, uh, those things, uh, like I said, when you hit a rock or something, instead of like a, a bushfire blade would do, if you didn't sling it, these things will pull back if you get something solid. You knock down as the, knock down as the tractor drive line or anything like that.
What make is it, sir?
Well, I, you, you, you see that on that paper, if you can pronounce it, I can't.
I see it and I can't pronounce it.
I think this is a German-made. I'm not a hundred percent sure of the word I made at, but it is, uh, I mean, I'll be, I'll be up there and look at it and it's a pretty heavy duty unit. It's not, it's not something just to throw together.
Zach, you got any warranty on it, warranty?
Well, any warranty on it, yes, sir. That's pretty much with anything like that.
Will they, will they service that at Nelson or?
They can, yeah. There's not, yeah, yeah, they can. There's not just a, a whole lot, you know, toy to be serviced with. I mean, there's, there's a few moving parts, but not as many as you would think. And if they need parts, of course, you know, they got, but those, uh, those as well.
Zach, we're gonna take this out of spots, right?
Yes, sir, out of spots, yes.
Okay. New Holland usually has pretty good, uh, pretty good equipment.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but we kept a tractor in there for over a year and a half, too. That was broken down, that was.
That was, that was in a different place.
Alright. Do you have any further discussion on this?
I have none.
Like more fish, if you want to say. Alright, that's been said, I'll ask for a motion, purchase this, uh, offset rail mower. I'll ask for that motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Zach.
Alright.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Alright, that brings us down to public commentary. If anybody's got anything they'd like to say, just come on up, raise your hand. Tell us who you are, where you're from.
Good evening, Commissioners, neighbors and friends. My name is Marco Fallagiano and I live off of Star Creek Road here in Fannin County. I stand before you today with a simple but meaningful request that Fannin County establish a landmark to honor not just a man, but a movement rooted in faith, courage and the timeless principles that define who we are as Americans. This is about turning a tragic loss into a lasting meaning. When the tragedy struck, I was personally devastated. I believe Charlie Kirk would have been president one day because he embodied a spirit of conviction, courage and a calling to reach others. At Charlie's memorial, his wife Erica said something that I will never forget. I forgive that man. The man who took Charlie's life was the very kind of person Charlie was trying to reach. That fact speaks more than anything to the power of his mission. And as Mr. Patterson says, today, on his birthday of thirty-two years, he is awarded the Presidential Medal of Freedom, the nation's highest civilian honor and a day of remembrance from Congress. Charlie Kirk had become one of the most influential voices reminding this nation and especially our youth that freedom without faith cannot stand because faith provides the higher ground of inalienable rights. Guaranteed by our Declaration of Independence, rights that cannot be taken away. A restraint against absolute power. A moral foundation of common ground, shared values. And the moral compass of our country depends on our willingness to speak truth even when it's difficult. Through his work and his witness and his message, Charlie rekindled a spirit of responsibility to God, to country and to one another. This proposal is about recognizing a movement that calls us back to the founding values written to both our Constitution and our conscience. Faith and family and freedom. And those are the same values of the heartbeat of Fannin County. You can feel them in our churches, in our classrooms, in our smaller businesses and our homes. By creating a landmark and recognition of Charlie Kirk's message and the Christian tenants that inspired it, we affirm that our community still believes in truth, in virtue and the courage to stand firm. We're saying to future generations, this is who we are and this is what we stand for. Let this landmark be a living reminder that light still overcomes darkness. Conviction still matters. Faith still shapes the destiny of free people. Thank you very much and God bless this country. Its people and all who serve it. I have, um, the petition, um, with about two hundred and fifty names, uh, on it. Um, shall I present that to you or shall I read it?
We're saying it would be, okay, I'd like to sign it, uh, so.
I sure do, yes, I do. That's, that's your copy, alright.
Let me ask you a question pretty soon now. What, what kind, what's, what vision do you have about?
It could be, it could be a host of things. On the petition, um, it could be something that, uh, could be a stretch of highway, obviously a bridge. Um, it could be something that maybe we could dedicate as a memorial, um, through, uh, donations of, of, of some sort. Um, I don't think it would be difficult to, uh, to, to fathom that. And I, and I believe that if we, uh, have this on some kind of a state-type highway, that it has to go up a little higher, um, than us. And I'm familiar with the process as well. Um, but it could be a host of things and it might be something for y'all to decide or maybe we could come up with some different ideas. I'm not particular on one item because I think there's a, a variety of things. Maybe things I haven't even thought of as well. Um, maybe a freedom flag, uh, posted at that triangle right there at McDonald's. I think that Pam, uh, used to keep that area. And there was another, uh, person that kept the other area on the other side, the right, right front of McDonald's. Um, and that, that, that might be an opportunity for us to maintain that area, uh, especially as visitors are coming into Blue Ridge. Maybe we could put flowers back there, um, and, and create some kind of a volunteer-type committee to maintain that as well. I don't think that would be very hard. I.
Well, we had a couple, too. We had a couple ideas, too, about what, you know, something to, for that, that's come through our minds, too. I mean, and, uh, we've just, we've been looking at that. And as you said, it, it is a little bit different whenever we start going up, um, like one of the ideas we had, we're gonna have to go through the state, so.
I was involved in memorializing Elige as the mountain capital of Georgia. And we had to take that up to the State Assembly and it was quite, it was quite enjoyable and rewarding. Son of Purdue actually, um, uh, introduced the article and, uh, I was able to speak in front of the State Assembly. It was all canned by, by, by their, by their norms and standards, but, um, uh, if we were to take it to that level, I, I have no problem in being involved directly. And if, if, if I'm the spokesperson, then that's fine. If not, um, it's really about the meaning and the message that, um, I mean, that we see every day, um, of what he represented, so. But, yeah, it's, it's, it's entirely, you know.
We'll, we'll, we'll work together because, I mean, we'd like to come up with something, too. I'm sure this board would like to do that, like they'll.
There seems to be applied a bit of things that are happening down in Florida as well. We've got some friends that live down and they noticed that, uh, certain bridges and highways and things like that are already being dedicated even as we speak. Right now, they seem to be popping up. I think that he's gonna be, his, um, likeness will be on a coin, four hundred thousand coins, uh, silver dollars, I think, pretty soon. So, there's definitely, um, a, a, a huge momentum to memorialize the movement and what he stood for throughout the entire country. So, if, if, if that comes to something much larger than, you know, a stretch of highway or a bridge or, or whatever that might be, I, I think the more people that would know about it, the more it would create the interest, especially right now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Marco. Anyone else? Alright, we'll close public commentary, uh, brings us to executive session. Gentlemen, uh, is there a need for executive session tonight?
Where?
Mr. Patterson does come.
Well, just like it is, we didn't ask, please. Yeah, don't be chicken.
Sure, I'd just like to say something.
Yes, sir.
Related to what Marco said. You know, uh, I am proud to be in Fannin County. I really am, a lifelong citizen. But, uh, Charlie Kirk had a great impact on the youth. Not just here, as we've seen in.
Around the world.
Right, around the world. And I think we have an obligation to take this and show the youth and, and, and lead the youth. They, they still need leadership. He was one of their leaders. But who will take a stand? And we can do the little things in our county to help out with that. And I think that's a small thing with a big impact that we can do. I'd just like to say that. Y'all may have to, I'll add something to this.
I think it's, it's an opportunity. I mean, it was, it's something, like you said, it was a bad, bad thing. But there's gonna be a lot of good come out of it. And if you can save young lives and let them see that this world's not as crazy as the news wants you to think, that sometimes, I mean, there is still hope and there's still love in this world. And so, and that's what he spread. He spread his love and hope and, uh, and let the people know that, uh, you've got, the young people, you speak up. You got, you got your constitutional rights. And so, if we're gonna pass this on down to the people that's gonna sit here one day, that you don't need to replace us, you know, I mean, they need to have that hope and love and positive attitude.
Exactly.
Well, like you said, it's our faith, family and freedom. Well, like you said, our faith, family, and freedom.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's good directions.
And vision without faith is hard to stand on, you know?
And, and it's woke the world up, just not the United States. It's woke the whole world up, and so, and faith is kind of, you know?
Yep.
So, but thank you for that.
Thank you.
No, I don't have a need for executive session. I'm, I'm good.
Are you sure, sir?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, that being said, I'll make a motion to adjourn and ask for a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Thank y'all for coming.
Appreciate everybody being, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.